Okay, we'll call the July 28th Newport Beach City Council's study session to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Curry has an excused absence.
Okay. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Muldoon?
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Pieter?
None.
Councilmember Petros?
None.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
None.
And I have none. So we'll move on to our next item, which is number two, the short presentation regarding new information on demolition permits and protection of nesting birds.
Good afternoon. Mayor Selich, councilmembers, I'm Brenda Wisniewski, Deputy Community Development Director. I'm joined by Dan Sereno, our landscape manager. Our presentation is so short, we're going to stand here and speak to you. This evening, we have, just wanted a quick update on the city's commitment to our birds. We want to try to increase awareness of our community of the tree migration, or I'm sorry, the bird migration requirements. So we want to go over with you what the city is doing as far as our commitment, as well as what we're doing to try to improve the awareness within our community. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan, who's going to go over the presentation, and we need to get the clicker.
Good evening, Mayor Selich and councilmembers, city staff and residents of Newport Beach. Again, Dan Sereno, Landscape Manager, thank you very much, Brenda, for the introduction. We'll make this real brief, just have a couple of slides for you to tell you some of the things we do for our public trees, and then Brenda will go over some of the stuff that's happening with the private trees. Go ahead. Our commitment is looking out for the birds under the mandated federal migratory bird treaties. We've been doing this for about 25 years here in the city for our public trees. When our city arborist came in, John Conway, he made a big push to protect the birds. We have a lot of birders, I will call them, in this city, in the Audubon Society that keep us informed about birds in our trees as well. And our commitment is to protect the birds. Our tree services provider, Great Scott Tree Services, is part of their contract, they have bird protection standards. It's specified within our contract that they have bird protection standards, and they will take care of the trees, and we'll go over that within the next slide or two here. Qualifications, John Conway, our city arborist, is a certified wildlife protector, as well as Russell Bartolata with the Great Scott. He's our area supervisor. They're certified by this organization, and they get annual tests to take a look at the birds. A couple of these trees right here that you see, on the left-hand side, is one of our Washingtonia robusta Mexican fan palms in the city yards that had, this was a recent picture back from spring, that had a brood of crows in it. So we skipped that tree for pruning altogether. And then the one on the right is a eucalyptus tree in Irvine Terrace Park that we believe was a Cooper's hawk's nest. Again, we skipped that tree as part of our wildlife protection.
Mike, Mr. Mayor, do we have monitors?
The slides aren't showing on the monitors. We have the handouts up, just been following in the handouts.
And then part of our standards, before we prune a tree, and this is within the contract, we obviously have to inspect a tree before we prune it, and we're not just looking for birds, we're looking for limbs and other things that might need to be pruned out of there. If it's inactive, we'll prune around the nest. If it's an active nest, we'll prune if we can only do so. But generally, if it's a large waterfowl such as this blue herring, we'll just skip the tree altogether and wait until the fledglings are gone, that we prune it after nesting season. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
So I wanted to mention, the pictures you see there, it was provided by one of our residents, Carol Westling. She actually lives on Newport Island, and many of the pictures were taken from nearby her home. So because of the valued resource we have in these birds, we also want to spread the commitment that the city has with our community. And to do that, we have developed a flyer that you have in your packet, and that flyer has been distributed in multiple ways. First, we have it at our counter. So when an individual comes in to propose demolishing of a structure, we also provide them that flyer for them to be aware that if they have any trees on site, they should be looking for the existence of the nests. Also, we use the flyers out in the field for code enforcement, if they are in the field and see that any trees are being disturbed, that they share those with individuals. We've mailed them also to the local haulers and associations within the community. And lastly, we have it on the city's website. Here's a close-up of the flyer itself, and I also have located some in the lobby for the public. It basically just goes over the state and federal laws itself and gives some ideas on how to avoid disturbing the existence of nests when you are doing construction or tree trimming. So with that, that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Any questions, the staff?
Mayor Selich.
Councilmember Petros.
I'm assuming that this is in response to the incident that happened recently, and help me understand that. That was not done by Great Scott or our crew. That was a private contractor working on private property.
That's correct.
Okay. So while I appreciate the efforts that we do, we can send out flyers all day long, and if somebody still wishes to break the law and a federal regulation, they'll do that. I applaud the effort that you do here. It saddens me that people will take it upon themselves to do something like what happened with that nest. But I just, I don't know what more we could do to prevent the horrible accident that did, or I don't even know if it is an accident, the horrible occurrence that happened, short of being out there and monitoring as people do that. We're certainly not going to do that. But I think Great Scott's doing a good job. Dan, you and your crew do a wonderful job with the landscaping in this town. And I know when we were working on the eucalyptus, we had issues with nesting birds, and you avoided those nests. The city takes those efforts when we do our work. So I want to applaud you for that.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Yes, thank you both for updating this, and just to follow up on Councilman Petros' comment about the incident that occurred on the Peninsula a few weeks ago. I think this is a good solution in terms of making certain the awareness is extensive and continuously communicated. Could you just describe for me the demolition permit process? What happens when a contractor representative comes to our offices to secure a permit? Does the permit itself have any kind of a warning statement on it concerning the demolition of protected birds?
It does not, right. Demolition permits do not require them to identify the existence of trees, nor do we identify the existence of the federal laws related to bird migration.
Short of changing our laws and creating brochures, is there anything else we can do to ensure that there is total awareness? What I, as I hear myself speak, I'm probably saying it requires a code change, but I don't, I want to stop short of doing that. But if we could be more proactive in communicating to private contractors who require a permit to operate in the city?
The flyer that you have before you is passed out once someone does obtain a demolition permit, as well as the fact, I believe the building permit does state that they still comply with all state and federal laws.
Okay.
But aside from that, I think that the flyer might be the strongest avenue for us to make that statement.
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any public comment on this item? Please come forward. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Shelley Irvin, and I'm one of the founders of the group that has been working around this issue in Baobab Peninsula Point. We are very happy about the work that's been done on this awareness, if you would call it that, that's available. But I'm still very concerned about there not being anything specific that is going to keep this from happening again. In talking with and working with a lot of the bird advocates all over the county, I've discovered that this happens all the time. And we, as a city, I'm very proud of my city because we're the only city in all of Orange County that actually makes a donation to wetlands and wildlife every time it brings in an injured animal. No other city does that, not even Huntington Beach, which is where the Wetlands and Wildlife facility is. So I'm very proud in that way, but I think that this effort needs more teeth. I think we need to possibly make some changes in codes or laws whereby contractors understand that they cannot do this, and that perhaps we can even establish neighborhood watches, wildlife neighborhood watch organizations for wildlife in our different communities, our different neighborhoods in Newport Beach. Because we've all been keeping an eye out since this happened, and it was a horrible, horrible thing. I mean, these men luckily have been, you know, there's been criminal charges filed by the DA, and because of the egregiousness of this particular crime and all the wildlife that was lost in our neighborhood, it will be generations before we could correct that of birds. So while I'm very happy that this is happening, we need more. So I would just urge you to think about that, and if there's anything that we can do as a neighborhood, and anything we can do in our communities to further this, I would like to know what that would be.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Ms. Irvin, I'd like to comment. Thank you for your comments. I think your idea about a neighborhood watch organization that could be expanded from the normal neighborhood watch to take particular notice to our wildlife, I think is an excellent idea. So I would encourage that for the residents all over the city to expand their watchful eye to protect our birds and other wildlife. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay, seeing none? That's just a report, correct, Mr. Kiff? Okay. Move on to the next item then, which is the blackball regulations review.
Mayor Selich, members of the council, I'm Rob Williams. I'm an assistant chief of the fire department in charge of marine operations, and with me I have my CALFIEI battalion chief, and we will go through hopefully a short presentation on the blackball regulations and where we came from in the last about 18 months. So tonight, we're here, the purpose of the working group was to review the current new resolution of municipal codes on regulations on surfing and flotation devices restrictions, and see if we can come up with a fair system and equitable system for all users. This was brought to us by former councilmember Nancy Gardner a couple of years ago, and we've been working on this, like I said, for about 18 to 20 months now, and it's finally to you. The members of the committee or the working group are in attendance today with Ron Cole, the PBNR commissioner chair, Marie Marshon, the commissioner, myself, Battalion Chief HALFIEI, Assistant Deputy Chief McGill with the police department, Sean Levin, and Raquel Vadez from Recreation and Senior Services. And how we got here today, briefly, we presented to PBNR in February of 2014, and basically we were asked for more information and more statistical data to justify our findings. We did that over the summer of 2014 and brought it back to PBNR in April of 2015, and we are here tonight with the recommendations that came through PBNR to you. And what we're looking here for this afternoon is any recommendations or direction to staff on how to move forward with this in a resolution adoption, some minor changes to the recommendations or just status quo. Brief overview of our city on our beaches, we have three different surfing areas, we'll get into those in a minute, but as you can see, we basically span from the San Ana River jetties all the way down through Crystal Cove, and that's our city limits. We have four recommendations from Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, and we'll go through each one individually, so I'm sure you've read them in the staff report, and I'll get to those individually as we go through. Recommendation one is year-round and citywide, our marine operations division has the authority to blackball, prohibit surfing and flotation devices in the surfing areas when unsafe conditions exist, and it's not limited, but between surfers, hardboards, body surfers, flotation device users, and swimmers. Basically, the current resolution, as we see, is more on the prevention, and generally speaking, we have to put it up from 12 to 4 on certain dates, and there has to be a reason why not to put it up. The proposed change basically gives us the authority at any time during the year that we can put it up when an unsafe condition exists, and that's kind of modeling the current practice and a better system, we feel. And it clarifies any potential why we don't do it versus why we do do it. Recommendation two is adjusting the areas in Coronado Mar, and right now, the terminology says that it's to the southeast boundary of the city, which includes Crystal Cove State Park. We don't do the jurisdiction in the beaches in Crystal Cove, that's the state park system, and so there's just a little bit of cleanup language that we need to define the boundary of our jurisdiction. And that boundary, this is the complete area right now as it's written in the resolution, and that shaded area in the green is kind of where we're in question, which we don't have the authority to enforce in this area. So this is the new terminology where it comes down Cameo Shores Road, the prolongation, I'll get the city attorney's office with all the language on how we define it, but it'll go to Cameo Shores, and that's right at the Pelican Point Golf Course and down Cameo Shores Road, and that's where our jurisdiction ends. So that's the new surfing area three. Recommendation three is a change from our current resolution on the area of 40 to 44 Street. And currently, the resolution states that it must be blackballed all hours a day from May 1st through October 31st, and the recommendation is to change that to Memorial Day, the Saturday before Memorial Day through Labor Day from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I'm going to let Battalion Chief HALFIEI go through some of the data that we collected, but we collected the data from May through October, and we found that some of these months of May, September, and October don't always necessitate that the blackball needs to be put up. And here's the difference, it does seem very drastic in a change for the timeframes, but here's the difference of just looking at it really quickly, on May through October, from all hours of the days that we are open, to the June, July, September, or June, July, August, in just the 10 to 5. And I'm going to turn it over to Battalion Chief HALFIEI to go through the data that we collected.
Councilmembers, so we collected data, when we came back to the PBNR the first time, one of the big things that came, there was a lot of anecdotal information, but not a lot of hard data of the users, and so we set out to try to capture a good sampling of the users. So four, between Tower 40 and 44, the blackball area, we collected data at 7:30 when our first patroller went out, at 10, at 1300 or 1:00 p.m., and then again at 4:00. Looking back on it, the information, the one real gap that I wish we would have had data at 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., some of the later evening, and you'll see where that comes into play. So here's at 7:30 a.m., this is when our first patroller arrives on scene up at between 40 and 44, and this is kind of just the natural sampling. So you can see in the morning, it's a majority, if not plurality, of surfers out, surfers and skimmers, then the board users in the red, and then the swimmers make up a fairly small sliver in those morning hours. At 10:00 a.m., you can see the composition starts to change where the surfing is down quite a bit, twofold for that during the June through September. Typically, there's a tower staffed in that area, and so that leads to a much higher compliance with the regulations, as well as just, there's just typically more surfers throughout Newport in the morning. And then you can see the bodyboarders and swimming makes up quite a bit, if not the complete number. Middle of the day, the tower is either staffed during the summer hours, or during the off-season, there's still a fairly heavy patrol presence, and so we're able to enforce the surfing regulations. And so you can see it's almost 100% compliance with just a little bit in the very tail of the seasons. And then at 4:00 p.m., still, you can see just a little bit of surfing, but primarily board users and swimmers making up the majority of that. Just looking at that same data, but just looking across it. And that's one of the hardest things when we were looking at this, is trying to quantify this in a way that's understandable and that accurately reflects the status up there.
And one note with the 40 to 44 recommendation, if the resolution is changed and we eliminate May, September, and October, the first recommendation always comes into play at any time during the year. So if there is a conflict, we do have the ability to put blackball up. It's not that we are eliminating blackball completely from this area, it is that we still have the ability at any time during the year, if a conflict arises, we will put blackball up, and that is during May, September, October, as well as December, January, and February. Recommendation four defines the area at the wedge, and right now, the area is focused on a movable object, which is our lifeguard tower. The tower rarely gets moved, but it does get moved due to surf and the demographics and the changes of the beach erosion factors. So that tower does get changed. So we looked at it, and we wanted to get a finite distance, and that's typical with the other areas that we have and the resolutions we have. And so we're proposing a change from basically the jetty to the tower, to the jetty to 600 feet on the mean height timeline. You can see it's about a 44-foot difference, a little bit. It's not that drastic a change, but what it also does is it opens up an area known as cylinders, which is over by Tower P, and that's not the wedge peak, but it's also, it gives the ability to have some bodyboarders or some skimboarders or other users the opportunity during the blackball hours to utilize that area for a safe environment and be able to have more demographics of users during the non-flotation restriction of 10 to 5 at the wedge. So again, the review, we went through our four recommendations. You know all these four. What we're looking for moving forward again is to direct staff to either prepare a resolution based on these recommendations and look at the municipal codes on necessary changes for a future council meeting, or we look at something different and change new recommendations, or we stay status quo. And we're open to any questions.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay. Councilmember Petros.
A couple of things. Good presentation, guys. When we come back to this at a council meeting, I'm sorry, I'm kind of a dim bulb, when you're outlining the dates that you would like to make changes, whatever the recommendations are, could you please use the same metric? So if you're saying from May 1st to August 31st, then don't in the next say Labor Day to Memorial Day. I don't, my head can't get that quickly. Could you give me the dates of Memorial Day and Labor Day if that's where we're going to go?
Well, those dates change annually.
Is there some way that you can give me some idea of the extent there? I'm not that quick. You can tell by just my virtue of this exchange that I'm not that quick.
It's the last Saturday in May, typically, sometimes it's the second to last, but it's usually the last Saturday in May through the first Monday in September.
Okay.
So it's full, it's June, July, August, with a few dates outside of those areas.
And Rob, you and I have talked a little bit about this, and I've just got to share, I am disappointed in the data collection. I work with data all day long, and the one thing that you're taught is when your data is trending, don't stop. You collect data through until you see that trend tail off. In these examples, 4 o'clock, swimming is increasing. The issue with the swimmers is both our guests, but also our residents, and many of our residents don't get off work until after 5:00. I don't, I go swimming when I come home, and that's generally later in the evening. So, you know, this doesn't really tell the tale of the tape, because we don't know who's using the water in the afternoon hours.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Rob, for the good presentation. I concur with Councilman Petros, because just in the swimmers that I've spoken with, that's when they swim, is after 4:00 o'clock, so we're missing a big chunk of data. Could you just clarify for me on your pie charts, so I too can understand this visual? So currently, if I understand it correctly, there is no surfing between 10 and 4:00 p.m., is that correct?
It's May 1st through October 31st.
During those blackball months?
All hours.
There's no surfing at all?
Correct.
Okay. Then that's why I'm reading these charts. Why are there surfers at 10:00 a.m. and at 1:00 p.m.?
It's because we don't always have the tower staffed at those times, and so we're taking the true data that when we arrive on scene, we have patrol vehicles coming up and down the beach, so as soon as we arrive on scene, we'll take our data sample, and that does include surfers, and then we'll enforce the blackball and take out the surfers. So that's why they include, especially it's a 7:00 a.m. timeframe, you can see that there's a lot of surfers in there, because that's when we come on duty and we go out for the first time in the morning.
So I will just say, and it concerns me, that the current rules are not being followed, correct?
No, we're enforcing the regulations.
No, I know you're enforcing, but the signs are posted?
Correct.
And they're not being followed?
Correct.
Okay. And so let me also clarify, so if you are a swimmer or a young child who's learning how to surf and learning how to boogie board and that type of thing, that's how you learn how to surf at some point, and someday you grow up and go to the wedge, I guess, is you are really competing with the surfers and the big boards in these times that are supposed to be, the only stretch of the beach that's devoted to swimmers as a competition to get that patch of water, is, am I understanding that correctly?
You could say that, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll look forward to hearing from the public's comments. Thank you.
Okay. We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone wanting to speak, come forward and state your name, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dave Bent.
Can you pull the microphone towards you, please?
I'm Dave Bent. I've lived on Seashore Drive for over 30 years, the last 25 as an owner, and I've been riding waves in Newport, West Newport, for 37 years. I'm a bodyboard surfer. I could never stand up on a board because my foot is still broken from being crushed in an accident over 40 years ago. When we compete for waves with surfers, we are at a distinct disadvantage. Due to the increased buoyancy of the larger boards, surfers can catch waves before a bodyboarder or body surfer can. And the only time I've ever been injured riding waves in West Newport was when I was on a wave and a surfer dropped in on me, hit me in the head with his board, and sent me to the hospital for stitches. For many years, blackball was just 12 to 4 every day from June 15th to September 15th. This closed the area to all of Newport's surfers at during that time. And several years ago, blackball was changed to allow more flexibility and give surfers more of an opportunity to surf in the middle of the day. Now, blackball depends on the amount of people on the beach and the amount of non-surfers in the water. And some areas now in Upper West Newport are almost never blackballed. This change gave surfers pretty much what they were looking for when they asked to change blackball. 40th to 44th Street, the only section that prohibits surfing all day from May 1st to October 31st, it's less than a quarter mile of beach. The best time to ride waves is first thing in the morning before the wind picks up. On weekends, the waves can get really crowded early, a lot of the year, not just in summer. There's no reason to take the one section of beach that doesn't allow surfing and change it to 10 to 5. Leaving it as is gives bodyboarders and body surfers and swimmers one area that they can ride waves in the morning without having to compete with surfers or have the threat of a surfboard sending them to the hospital. Blackball was changed to allow surfers more time in the water during the summer. In the mornings, surfers have the entire coast of Newport to ride waves, except 40th to 44th Street. Don't limit the hours or the months of blackball at 40th to 40th Street. Please keep one area open, small area open for non-surfers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Daryl Kazars. I've been in Newport Beach for about 20 years. I am a boogie boarder. I'm learning how to surf, and one day, maybe I'll get up on the board. The gentleman that opened up the session actually indicated- The gentleman that opened up the session actually indicated fair, I'd like to emphasize the word safety. On a surfboard, the surfer's standing on the surfboard. On a boogie board and swimmer, you're parallel with that surfboard. As the previous guest, Speaker, I've also been hit by a surfboard. You are correct, surfers don't abide by the blackball. If any emphasis, I think they should put another measure on a stronger policing for that blackball. I'd be more than welcome to put suggestions forward, because that is taken very, very lightly. I would probably give that a D-, if that, with regards to patrolling. Again, the emphasis is safety. The blackball, current policy is in place for safety. Today's meeting should be about safety, and I would ask, why would the blackball rules be changed? Because if the hours are changed, then the safety element is still in place. You'd never get rid of the safety element, so it should be safety first. Keep in mind, that area is accessible to surfers six months out of the year. So it's a small, it's a small time that we get to get out there and basically do our thing. Everything else is open to surfers. Surfers carry a sense of entitlement. I invite all of the, anybody in this room to go out into this specific area and be challenged by surfers. Again, they think that they own the water, and for some reason, because they're on a board, they feel it's a sense of entitlement. I respect them, I like them. I haven't had any confrontations as far as, you know, you guys see the blackball, can't you read? But 10 times out of 10, they disregard it on those that get out there. Rarely will I see a lifeguard flush them out, respectful for the ones that do do that, and it has happened. So I've got to give them credit, that's why the grade is a D-. That is all for today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. You have the other microphone, it's taller.
Council members, and Mr. Williams and Mr. Hoffey, thank you for listening to me today. As you can tell by the graph, that I've spent a lot of time, you can see what I did is I deciphered the amount of time that surfers dominate the water as opposed to swimmers throughout the whole year.
You state your name for us, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Murphy, lived in Newport shores for 44 years. Basically, the surfers dominate with 3,730 hours out of the year. A swimmers, body surfers, swimmers, boogie boarders, whoever, we basically get 356 hours out of the year. So now what this proposal is trying to do is take away, Mr. Petros, what they're trying to do is take away half of that time, take away a couple of the months. Why? I just, there's nothing that can be said to me that explains that. I love going out in May, I love going out in September, in fact, September and October are my two favorite months. I have surfed my whole life. I love surfers, my son surfs. I also feel that they deserve a place to be able to surf all day, too. But then, I want somewhere where I can go all day. Like you said, Mrs. Dixon, why are there surfers out? Today, I went out at 48th Street at 12:00. Beach was packed, I'm going to take a guess, probably 200 people from 44 to 48. They put blackball up at 12:47, and by the time all the surfers were out, it was 1:15. They did not put blackball up today, from 52 on down until 2:20. I go back to the 60s and 70s, when, like the gentleman said, it was 12 to 4. This 12 to 4 is nonexistent. It does not happen. And one question I have, Saturday, there was an episode where 20 surfers went out with blackball up at 56th Street. Blackball was up, Fletcher, the lifeguard, was on duty, they basically kept on flipping them off. They called, he called the police department, the police department did not get there for an hour and a half. I don't know if there's a police officer here, but I'd love to know the answer to that. Why did it take an hour and a half for the police department to get there, when these guys defiantly went against the law? I'm all about the laws. Let's just make a law, let's don't leave it discretionary. I'm not, I'm going to stop at the stop sign 100% of the time, because I know I'm supposed to stop at the stop sign. But if you change it, well, this lifeguard says, well, this day, the 120 rule does not work. It does not work. This weekend, the beach was packed. I personally had to call lifeguard headquarters to bring this to their awareness. And it wasn't, if that wasn't for that phone call, Lord knows when that blackball would have gone up. Let's define a law, make it law. Right now, it's 12 to 4. 44 years, you guys, it, in the 70s, it did. In the 70s, that worked, and it was enforced. It's not being enforced now. So at the end of the day, I want the surfers to have somewhere to surf all day. But I want somewhere where I can swim all day, and that's not happening. I'm all for the surfers having somewhere. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. As you can tell, I'm very passionate about this.
Thank you.
My name is TK Breimer. I'm owner of the surf shop called The Frog House, West Newport Beach. I haven't flipped off any lifeguards in 50 years that I can remember. I haven't run over anyone and given them stitches in my entire, entire life, and I surf five days a week. My goodness, I must be missing a lot of action on the beach, because I don't see these guys running off and getting drawn to the hospital because of the surfers. I personally make 6 to 12 rescues, lifesaving rescues, a day, I mean, a year, in Newport Beach. And I've had a few of the lifeguards come up and thank me on that. We're always a presence in the water that's, you know, we're looking out for each other and others. I've, can't remember saving any swimmers, but it's usually bodyboarders and surfers get caught in a riptide. Well, actually, there are swimmers get caught. I don't know, I'm half afraid to come up here, because all these horrible stories we've been hearing. I'm a law-abiding guy, I stop at a lifeguard, I mean, I'm a surfer, and I stop at the stop sign also. I just want you to know that. I'm just, I think one of the problems that we have is that this boogie board area in 40th to 44th Street represents an exclusive area for bodyboarders. And gosh, I don't hate bodyboarders, I sell bodyboards, I love bodyboarders, I get along with bodyboarders great normally. There's just not an exclusive place for the surfers to surf all day long, and it seems like a little bit of a second-class citizen because of that. I know Huntington and Sunset Beach and Seal Beach and San Clemente, and any, absolutely any city on the coast has an all-day surfing area for surfers, except for Newport Beach. It's not in the proposal for this all-day surfing area to come to existence, and that's disappointing to me. Henceforth, I'm not really excited about the blackball working groups, work that they got here. But on the other hand, you don't always get what you want, and I'm not going to get what I want. And some kind of compromise is better than no kind of compromise. I guess I've got a couple minutes to go, 1:06 seconds. I was going to tell you, if I owned a house at 44th Street, I would want it to be as exclusive as possible for my usage. And gosh, if I had that kind of money, I'd feel like maybe I deserved it. I don't, and I don't have the kind of money. But I think, I would just ask the council to consider the larger number of people that come to the beach. It's not just the guys that are on the front row there on the beach. God bless them, I wish I'd be one someday, but think about us surfers, realize we're not, I don't know, we're just not the, we're not the characters that we're getting painted out to be here, okay? I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Selich, while we're entertaining the other speaker, I want to acknowledge that District 2 in Newport Beach is home to the city's largest employer, Hoag Hospital. But no disrespect, Mayor Protem Dixon, District 2 is also home to the best surf shop, and that's The Frog House.
Go ahead. Stick your name.
Brent Rennick. I was a lifeguard for 30 years. I disagree with TK. I was out there way more than him. He is a very good guy, he is very compliant, but he is the exception. But he also serves up at 71 North, and if it's truly honest, we both know that 71 North never closes to surfing, maybe on the 4th of July every couple of years. But what we're here to decide is what's safe. Boards and swimmers don't mix. It's not safe to have in the water. Boards do cause injury. And what's fair, the majority of, vast majority of people do not surf. I would say 3% to 5% of the beach surf, at most. And that's a very generous, how many of you surf? How many of these people in here surf? How many of your neighbors surf? How many of your friends surf? Not very many. Now, these guys are getting the vast majority of time. Are they getting more than they're fair? For sure. And the surfable area is probably 17th to Tower 74. That's 57 blocks. Four of them are for surfing, are for bodyboarding during the, in body surfing, that's 40 to 44. That's not a lot to ask for, for six months of the year. And we already saw the sheets from the lifeguards, that the compliance level is very low. You see it every day. You don't, they do not comply, it takes hours to get them out of the water, it's a hostile environment. And also, I'd like to go with consistency, there's not a consistency. Every day, it's something else. One person wants to do it one way, one person wants to do it another way. I was there with Kevin today, there was at least 200 to 300 people on the beach, and there was no blackball. Also, if you don't blackball, you're going to up the liability of the city, you're going to have increases and altercations between, if your parent and a kid buzzes your kid on the board, of course, you're going to go defend your kid, and you're going to have some more problems. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jeff Bertolite. I also was lifeguard for 13 years, and I cut my presentation short, I agree with the gentleman here. I am out there, I'm now living in Newport, Oregon, instead of Newport Beach, but I'm down here visiting my mom. So it, I was out there, and I've been out there during the times when you're trying to go to close this, make it a shorter period of time. The people do not respect the lifeguards or the rules, that's why you see that pie chart. And you say, well, it's time to move, and they say, no, I'm not moving, I live here. They give you an attitude. So I'm out in the water, my head is at the level where the board hits, could hit me, it's basically, it's a deadly weapon. So it can happen, and I've seen it happen through the, my professional career as a lifeguard. I was also city council up in Newport, Oregon, and I know the issues you guys face. I just would say, stay the course, leave the time period you have currently, enforce the regulations. Right now, if there isn't a jeep or a guard, there is no enforcement. So, and I know the money issue is a problem, but don't shorten this issue, don't take away a safety area where I can go out and swim at different times and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council members, Mayor, Mayor Protem. I thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. My name is Chris Cargill. I grew up in Conomar since 1970, live in Costa Mesa currently, near TK's shop here. And I really appreciate the opportunity to consider changes to be made. And one of the things, as a surfer, is that, you know, I'm a husband, a father of two little children, and I would love to see them grow up and also be surfers like myself. I fear that people are painting surfers in the wrong light, in the sense that we get out there early in the morning because we know that the beaches are going to be closed, and because we have an office to go to, and, which I'm not in currently, to come here, because it's so important to me. I hear people saying that, that it's for the surfers. Well, no, you can go to Huntington Beach, or you can go to various San Diego municipalities, and there are either sections set aside for surfing, or it's a, it's a complete amalgam. And I don't hear horror stories occurring in Huntington, where it's completely open all the time, and there's a mix of bodyboarders and surfers and swimmers and people out there getting along. Generally speaking, the surfers are going to be farther out, as you're probably aware of all this, along with the bodyboarders. The swimmers are generally just cooling off in the shore break and that sort of thing. My fear is that there's a great tendency to curtail people's freedoms. And I have friends that are my age, you know, we're all in our 40s with kids, and when we get an opportunity to have a board meeting in the middle of the day, we can't do it during the summer, unless we go to Huntington, or we go down to Tressels, or someplace that's a state park. And I really, really commend the committee here for putting together some means of finding a compromise here. 40th through 44th in particular is a hot-button issue with me. I have poached 40th through 44th, yes, I'm one of those guys, but I get out when I'm called out. And the reason is because the beach pulls in swells from both the west and the south, because it's right at the bend in the peninsula. So 40th through 44th will often have some of the best waves in the area. I would urge you to consider adopting some of these resolutions, and I thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Stefan Jeremias. I've lived in Newport Beach since 1976, and currently reside at 12244th Street. And, you know, I'd like to first start by thanking the lifeguards for what they do for us every day, keeping our ocean safe, and, you know, dealing with what's not an easy situation. There's, everybody's passionate about what they want to do and enjoy the water, and it's a limited resource, so it's hard to kind of break that up into different user groups. I think it's been a pretty nice summer so far. I think that the discretion policy has been working well in accommodating different types of user groups. I don't think there's been any incidents of safety concern with boards hitting swimmers during those discretionary times. So I don't, I think the safety thing gets kind of hyped up a bit, when the roots of this law really are in the 1960s, where, when boards weighed, you know, 50, 60 pounds, and there were no leashes. So if you got hit by a board, it was a whole different story than with the shorter, lighter, leashed equipment, and even the soft top boards get called out during the blackball hours. So I don't think the safety concern is quite as big as most people make it out to be, and I'm sure there's some statistics on that from the lifeguard department we could look at. Anyway, I'd like to support the recommendation number three. I think it's a compromise. I think everybody should be prepared to compromise in this situation. I would like to point out two other things. One, as a father of two children that are learning about the ocean, and, you know, I take them to the beach as much as I can, and the kids really don't have much of a place as Councilwoman Dixon asked about, to learn how to stand-up surf in the summertime, because the blackball prohibits them from, from learning. And, you know, I put, I'd like to ask that you consider making the blackball enforcement consistent with other city activities, like the surf camps that you have, you run in the summertime, because I just ran into this situation the other day, and everyone has their random different situation, but I enrolled my kids in a city surf camp, and it was supposed to be from 8:00 to 12:00 at 28th Street, and the kids were kicked out of the water at 11:00 because of the blackball. So, you know, parents enrolled their kids during that time, yet a city regulation is prohibiting that time from being realized. So, you know, I'd suggest that if there's surf camps in the navigator, that the blackball is adjusted accordingly, and the lifeguards use the discretion to say, hey, at least half of this jetty field should be allocated towards surfing, so the kids and the parents that pay for the camp can enjoy that. And then the other point, you know, everybody's here saying, I want to do this, and I want my spot, and I want my place. And I'm not trying to take away from the bodyboarders or the body surfers between 40th and 44th Street, but I'm kind of being forced to find some way to find more time to surf in the summertime in Newport. And as some people have indicated, Newport's an anomaly. I've been, I've surfed quite a few places around the world, and there's always a place, whether you're in France, or in Spain, or Portugal, or Laguna Beach, you can go surfing during the day in the summertime, there's designated surfing areas. So I would like to ask the blackball working group to reconsider at least studying a designated surfing zone, so that we can see if that works in with kind of the structure of our coastline and our usage patterns. So, thank you for your time, and hopefully we can all enjoy our ocean a bit more.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable counsel, my name is...
Next speaker, please.
Honorable counsel, my name is Dan Cohen. I was born at Hoag, grew up in Newport Beach. I've spent decades living in Maui, and I'm back in Newport. I would just like to ask that the area between Fortyth and Forty-fourth Street not have any change in its regulations. I know many people that go down and use it in the late afternoon, often after work. There's some friends of my folks, they're retired, they wait for their daughter to get off of work, they go swim there, they're valuable members of our community. And on Maui, or at least in Hawaii, there's an expression, "Maalama kupuna," and it's "take care of your elders." I know that the surfers can put together a big unified front and speak as one voice, and the people who go down and go swimming, it's really just people that like to go down. And I've been down with them. It's a wonderful opportunity, a chance to get in the ocean when the conditions are right. I think it's a very small area when you look at the overlay of the entire surfing area. And when I was a kid, we'd spend every day in the summer from Thirty-sixth to Fifty-sixth Street. And just between two groins, one section, I don't think is excessive to ask to be reserved for that. That's it. Thank you very much for your considerations.
Thank you.
Jim Miller, Marcus Avenue, Honorable Mayor and City Council. In nineteen ninety-five, one of our current West Newport Board members was on PBR when the Newport City Council passed Resolution Ninety-five, one sixteen, which reads, "The city finds and declares as follows: A restriction on the use of ocean beaches specified in this resolution are intended and designed to minimize any conflict between users and thereby reduce potential for personal injury." So you adopted the resolution nineteen ninety-five. The current West Newport Beach Association and Newport Island Association continue to support this resolution, and we request that the blackball policy stays, stays the same. Residents need a safe place to swim with their children and grandchildren. One of our board members this morning was quite upset when he found out about this proposal. Many just found out about it. I've received a lot of emails in the last few days. And he said, he noted that they've worked these, this regulation well for over twenty years, keeping us safe from getting hit from surfboards. We don't need to fix what isn't broke. The surfers already have most of the whole coast. If you look at the blocks behind you, and, I don't know, maybe there's ten, the surfers have one little section at Forty-fourth Street. I strike that, the swimmers. Families, swimmers, and body boarders need a, need the safety provided by the current blackball regulations. As far as the data goes, the evening data, Mr. Pestros is accurate, also the morning data, the reason why there's so few May at seven-thirty, in May at seven-thirty is because it's not enforced. They're afraid to go out. The, the boarders will go out, the body boarders, after more surfer, more lifeguards get there, they would love to go out in the morning hours. I was out there last week or two weeks ago with a guy named Kyle, who is a minister at his church, and he had a bunch of kids out there, college-age, they're kids to me, and they let me take off first in every wave. I'm all for that. It was fun. You know, good people. But anyways, but they won't go out at seven-thirty if it's not being enforced. The surfers are not bad people, and the lifeguards are not bad. The lifeguards go and say, "Hey, everybody out?" And they regularly do it, because I'm out there almost every morning, I run and body But, so the surfers will go across the jetty, and then a surf, surf, as soon as the lifeguard leaves, and the lifeguard knows it, they, they swim back, and they catch waves. And one board will take five or six body surfers out because those boards hurt, all right? My daughter serves, I used to surf. I love time for people surfing, but we need to keep these regulations in place. The data at seven-thirty, then all of a sudden, ten o'clock, eighty percent in May use it, swimmers and body surfers? Well, there needs to be a seven-thirty, eight o'clock looked at, eight-thirty, and nine o'clock, not just that timeframe. So anyways, I hope you'll all do what's really fair and give everybody a fair shot.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jason Harney. I didn't have the pleasure of growing up in Newport Beach. I actually grew up in Fountain Valley, which meant I had to ride my bike down the River Trail to get to the beach. And of course, at the end of the trail, I have to choose, do I go to Huntington, or do I go to Newport? Newport's much cooler, so we always turned left and came here. Well, actually, the real reason is because there was a blackball area for us between Fortyth and Forty-fourth Street. I grew up wanting to be a body surfer, because my big brother was a body surfer, and that's a place where I could learn, where there weren't hardboards out there, the waves were good, and it was a safe place with some, there were some body boards, softboards, and a lot of people swimming during the summer afternoons. I go there, it's a safe place to learn to body surf. Eventually, I got up enough courage to head a little further south and go to the wedge. And I'm here as a member of the Wedge Preservation Society, which is a group of people who do all kinds of things, surf, kneeboard, skimboard, body surf. It's not just body surfers down there. But as a member of that group, I wanted to tell you that our group is in favor of keeping the regulation the way it is, between Fortyth and Forty-fourth. It's a safe place for, I have five kids, actually, to bring my, my kids, I teach them to body surf, and just to have a day at the beach without hardboards being an issue there with kids in the water and lots of swimmers. However, as you've heard from a lot of the surfers here, Newport's a city that doesn't have a specific area that's just for surfing. And so we also want to echo the sentiment that maybe the, the board and the committee looks into saying, "Can we find a place that picks up both south and northwest swells different times of the year in the city and say, 'This is a place for surfers,' where they don't have to dodge swimmers and compete with body boarders who are inside them trying to catch the same waves?" Maybe that might alleviate some of that, that conflict you're seeing there in, in this one area, if there's a place where we say, "This is swimmers, body surfers, body boarders for part of the year, twenty-four hours a day, like it is now." And this area here, those other, you know, which amount to sometimes obstacles to surfers, aren't allowed in the water, and they have a place where they can have their board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Downboard. I'm probably one of the younger members in here. I was born in Hoag, eighty-three, grew up a little Corona, and I've been surfing in Newport most of my life. I heard about this meeting, like some of these other people did, very last minute. I actually jumped up from my desk about at four o'clock and ran out the door, and my boss is like, "Where are you going?" And since he's lived in this town, I just quickly explained, he gave me a thumbs up and said, "Go for it." So anyway, I completely agree with everybody in here in the fact that it is a big safety issue. I surf, I body surf, I longboard. And I, I also agree with TK in the fact that West Newport does get shut down, for example, on last Saturday. I was surfing Sixty-first Street with a couple of friends of mine, and all of a sudden, they decided to put the blackball up around twelve-thirty, one o'clock, which made sense, there's a lot of swimmers in the water, and I don't want to hit anybody. I've been run over, I've been hit, and most of the damage to me has been actually by my own board. So I get that. So then I walked up to the lifeguard, and I said, "Hey, I see they shut it all the way down up to Seventy-first Street." And he goes, "Well, we're gonna leave Fifty-sixth open. Only on the jetty, we're gonna leave Fifty-sixth open." So there was a gentleman here earlier who got upset with that and was wondering why the police and lifeguards didn't do anything about it, is because they allowed surfers to do that. I don't give the lifeguards D minuses, I, I give them A pluses. I've had him where they come to me and say, "Hey, you gotta get out of the water," and I'll try and milk it a little bit and be like, "Okay, everybody else will get out, and I'll be the last guy." But I get it, I, I understand, and I think at the end of the day, the compromise should be this. I think we should keep Fortyth to Forty-fourth. I grew up my whole life knowing that I couldn't surf there during the summer. It is one of the better waves, I will give them that. But why not go from Blackies to, to Forty-fourth, make that all blackball too? Because usually during the winter swells, west-northwest, northwest, those are the spots where all the surfers go. In the summer, we get the west-southwest, west, and we love the south-southeast down at the Point, too, so. Pretty nervous. I don't mean to sound so shaky, I'm not prepared usually when I public speak, I have a lot of like footnotes and stuff, but I just think at the end of the day that we should, we should take another look at it. I mean, why, I, I don't know, maybe open it to the forum, because I see swimmers down there all the time. As a surfer, I'm looking for bigger surf, and it's usually in the northern part, and you can go up to Huntington and whatnot, but it's more susceptible to winds. And there's that little section between Fifty-second Street and like Sixty-eighth during the summer, that's really good. And in the morning times, I surf before, I surf before work, I surf at my lunch, and then actually, right now, I'm running to go meet some friends right now to go surfing too. So, you know, good luck with all of it, take everything into consideration, keep Fortyth to Forty-fourth. And finally, it's last to see some of your guys' names, I remember voting for you back in November, and it's finally nice to see some faces, so. God bless, good luck.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Georgia Sina Corey, and I've been surfing, and I live at Four, Sixty, Sixty-second Street, Newport Shores. I am nine years old, and I've been surfing for about four years.
My name is Ryan Kotnick, and I live at Forty-one Colton Street, and I've been surfing for about five years.
We are here to support the changes of the blackball rules. We grew up surfing Blackies, but we have gotten good enough so we can surf bigger waves. I've ridden up to six feet surf at Fifty-sixth Street. I only caught two, and I spent a lot of time under the waves rather than riding them. I've also surfed Ocean Side in Tressles, but that is a long way to go when we have perfect waves to surf here in Newport.
I've ridden Forty-fourth Street quite a lot this summer. At times, the waves at Forty-fourth are too big, and we looked down at Forty-ish Street, and they're the perfect size for me and my friends, but it's blackballed all, all day long, every day.
We really want to support the idea of not blackballing until ten AM, and again, lifting the blackball at five o'clock. I would love to surf the break with my dad in the summer, when the water is warm and I am out of school. Thank you for considering these changes to the blackball rules.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Come forward, please. I don't think you can top that one.
Tough act to follow, and I'm reading too, so. My name's Tim Burnham. I'm a representative of the Wedge Preservation Society. Regarding the blackball area north of the wedge, known as the cylinders area, at the PBR meeting, all changes to blackball at the wedge were voted down, but one commissioner chose to raise the area of change as a separate issue. Because so much time had been spent on the main discussion, and the time was getting late, there was no public discussion, commentary on this point. As a result, I don't believe there was a full understanding of the ambiguity and concerns involved with the way this change was worded. The wording of the recommendation mentions that the break called cylinder, excuse me, cylinders would be excluded from the blackball by the new area definition. There are three concerns with the proposed change. My first concern is ambiguity. We believe the six-hundred-twenty-foot area does in fact include the cylinders break, so there would immediately be a conflict in the setting of the area. Is it six-hundred-twenty feet, or is it where the cylinders break starts? Inconsistency is my second issue. Like the issue with the Tower P not being stationary, the cylinders break moves, it's dependent on tide and the sand conditions, swell size, and swell direction. Sometimes cylinders can be as close as two-hundred feet away from the wedge. The third, third issue is safety. If cylinders is excluded from the blackball, it reduces the area for body surfers, since many will no longer be able to ride there, which creates overcrowding and safety issues amongst the body surfers. Far more important, allowing boards to use cylinders will resort, result in board riders finishing their waves in the same area that body surfers finish theirs from in the opposite direction. Cylinders is a right, and wedge is a left, which creates an extremely dangerous, dangerous convergence. Not only do body surfers face getting hit or getting run over, loose boards will be in the surf line where body surfers and swimmers are finishing their waves, or just simply, you know, swimming in that area. Also, most surfers do not wear leashes at cylinders, and the current typically pulls towards the wedge. We do not believe the above issues were fully understood, and there was no opportunity for public comment to explain. As a result, we suggest leaving the blackball area as is. If there was to be a change in the area distance, then the blackball area must be defined, include cylinders under the changing conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Bob Costin, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, as well as Defend the Bay. My notes have been passed on to you, they're coming down the, the way now. This is a, a map off of the city site, and the area we're talking about, my comments are specifically directed to item number three, Forty to Forty-fourth Street. We're looking at, this area is basically eight-hundred feet, it's not a quarter mile, eight-hundred feet out of eight miles is what we're asking for. And I do hope you give it to us because, and I do enjoy the Frog House, it's great business, I thank you for being there. I do disagree with your take on surfers. Some are great like you, some are very courteous. I have had the misfortune of being run off of Forty to Forty-fourth Street. I don't go at seven-thirty, I go down there at about six because I have to work. Unfortunately, I have to get home, shower, dressed, and to the office. So on behalf of myself and Defend the Bay, of the four blocks we're talking about, we're asking for a place for the kids to go without exposure to damaging ocean devices like skegs and hardboards. Somebody to say, "Walls are lighter today." I defy you to think about having a surfer on a board moving at speed, cutting across your back with a skeg. I've been hit, it hurts like hell. A place to go with kids, even a small hardboard can severely injure someone, an adult, let alone a child, or elderly, or physically impaired person. Additionally, I had liked to ask if this could be considered an illegitimate taking, a form of backsliding. For decades, Newport Beach has granted these rights, protections, and shelter to the public, safe access to body surf the waves without fear of harm in the tidal zone. Will this incredible, incredibly valuable resource, which no one can put a price on, be taken away? A plaintiff's attorney will let us know the value of human injury or death that that occurs. And by the way, Jack Skinner has shared with me that people have died from surfer, body surfer contact at Hoag. By the way, Nancy unfortunately is not here because she had an appendix removed yesterday, last night, and she's still in the hospital. She gives you her best. Is this an element of the Newport Beach's coastal development program, which is, would be also part of our general plan filed with the Coastal Commission and agreed to by the Coastal Commission? Does the city even have the right to rescind this incredible coastal access right without Coastal Commission review and approval? Was the Coastal Commission staff informed of this in a timely and legitimate way? It should not be a ministerial decision by a local lead agency. The ocean's a general public resource, and anything that affects its equitable access should have more reasonable thought and discussion put into it by many parties. I didn't know about it until it was already passed on the board. I have sent an email to the board, I had one person call me back, that was it, the PBR board that was on this, this program. Public access to information was tough. To rescind this seems dangerous to me, hazardous, and it creates both an attractive and public nuisance, leaving the city exposed to negligence litigation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello? Hello? My name is Robert Cook. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for more than forty years. I'm gonna just talk about cylinders because it's possibly something you'll vote on today. Cylinders, as a general rule, is about two to three hundred feet away from the peak at the wedge, and it's almost never ridden by anyone, or especially body surfers. It's completely left alone. To not let it be used, in my opinion, is basically very, very, very sad. The body surfers right now have seven hours a day, every day, seven days a week, six months to ride the peak. They also have all other hours of the day to be in the water. They never take cylinders and want to use it, because it's pretty brutal. So at least open up for the boogie boarders, and that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Josh Yocum. I'm here to speak to recommendation number four and to warn against making any changes to the distance as far as blackball procedures and protocol are concerned down in the area known as the wedge. Dave, if you don't mind, can you put up Exhibit D? Or Rob, Mike? On the chart. Thanks, Rob. Is there a way to make that bigger? Does counsel, do you guys have it up there? Okay. The, the area, or the, the point of the Balboa Peninsula is known around the world typically as the wedge. You know, that's the wedge, the Peninsula Point area, that is where the wedge is located, and that's known across the world. It's a misnomer to say that any adjacent waves to the one that refracts off of the jetty has a name or a title. To me, it's, it's nonsensical. That area is known as the wedge, and, and I pulled up on Surfline, I'm sure we're all familiar with Surfline, their description, and I'll just read the first paragraph to you. "The wedge is not a wave, it's a twenty-foot-plus meat grinder dreamed up by the devil himself. It heaves, bends, and pulverizes in ways..." It heaves, bends, and pulverizes in ways that good little waves aren't supposed to act. The first time you swim or paddle out on a solid day, a typical thought might be, dang, is my chiropractor covered in my medical plan?" Now, this is being facetious, but you see 30-foot waves there. And, and why on earth would you want to open up that area to more people? It, it boggles my mind. Now, when we put up that there's waves at the wedge, or people find out that there's waves at the wedge, sure, there's throngs of crowds filling the beach in the thousands to watch people, you know, surf large 30-foot waves, and especially watch the wipeouts. But there are other days when people should not be there as well. Okay? You could go there on a 30-foot day, or on a 2-foot day. People don't need to be in the water there. It's a dangerous stretch of beach. And shrinking that area, to me, is just, it's, it's, there are grave safety hazards with that. And unless the council wants to put billboards on the 91 West, and anywhere coming down to the Balboa Peninsula, warning against, you know, the dangers to this, to this stretch of beach, I, I think you maintain the status quo, limit the amount of people that attend this area of the beach, and, and keep it as is. You know, another point, and you can't see it here, because it's not a 3D depiction of it, but there is a shore break. This whole area is a shore break. And so, when you sit in that lifeguard tower at the wedge, and you look down towards Tower P, there's berms, there are sand berms. An individual cannot see the waterline from sitting on that lifeguard tower. They just can't do it. You could sit up there, go for a walk. Sit up on that tower, look at Tower P, see if you can see the waterline. Okay? Any more access to that area, whether it be swimmers, surfers, skimmers, body boarders, it is a bad idea, and, and I warn against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers? Okay, bring, bring it back to council. Any council comments on this?
Quick question on recommendation two. Why? To clamp the books, or?
Yeah, that's the one that is, we are, have our city boundary that's defined by the current resolution, all the way through Crystal Cove, as we annex Crystal Cove a number of years ago. So, our regulation includes Crystal Cove, which we don't have jurisdiction over on the beaches. It's a state park system.
Councilmember Duffy.
Thank you. I was, I've been total agreeance with Councilman Petros. I too was confused. I'm happy you brought that up, and you look stupid. I don't. But I, I do, I, I lived at 48th Street for a winter, and then nine years at 70th Street, right on the ocean. And I surfed, and I kneeboarded, and that kind of thing, a lot. So, I'm very, very well aware of this, these issues, and it's quite complex. I also was very interested in Councilman Petros's stats, or these factoids that were collected. I really think they need to be relooked at. Maybe it's too hard to look at it. I don't, I don't know, it's too expensive, or whatever. But, at the end of the day, the bottom line, as a surfer guy, nobody surfs where their wave is closed out, or it's blown out. So, at the end of the day, morning is best. It's when you have the glass, and that's when you surf. At the end of the day, I don't know the percentage, but the majority, the vast majority of the time, the westerly is picked up. Sadly, you were at work, and you've rushed down there, and there it is, blown out. Well, you want to go for a swim, you might try, but it's, it's a joke to try to catch a blown-out wave. And, and you do anyway, because you're there, and you're, you're trying. But, the majority of people that really enjoy surfing do it in the morning, and they do it where the wave is breaking right. So, what you do is you go up and down the, the beach, and you look for the break, and this morning, that's not breaking, this one's not breaking, this is. The, the fact is that, when I was in high school, there were no groins. Okay? We were sandbagging, saving those homes. And when they put the groins in, suddenly, you had the best waves imaginable. Those are wave-making machines. And if we were really rich, we would tear this place down and put 100 groins out there, or something. You'd have surf, this would be the surfing place of the world. We're not doing that. So, short of that, you know, it is, surfing is a morning, glassed-off kind of a thing. And, and I just think that, you know, at the, at 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, you, majority of the time, you've missed it. You know, it's good, it's good for swimming, and maybe attempting a wave or two, but truly, it's not the answer to, in my opinion, to suddenly, surfers will be so happy to surf at 5:00 o'clock when it's blown out. I think that's kind of a little preposterous. On the other hand, I wish there was a place that we could figure out that, you know, we could surf, surf, surfboards could be surfing all day. I don't know how we could ever do that. But, I know this is a complex problem, and, and the wedge, it's exactly, the last speaker, it's totally true. You do, you body surf there a couple times, and you're pretty much done with that, unless you're, no, your health program, you're going to visit Hoag, most likely. So, this, this problem is interesting to me that it came back, because I think it was working. And I didn't hear anything bad about all this, to my knowledge, and why, why it was relooked at, I'm not sure. I think maybe we should step back, get some better facts, maybe look at it more broadly, or keep discussing it. I, I, it's my whole thing. I'm just, it's a confusing proposal, these, these. I'm not really convinced on any of them. I'm mostly for just keeping it kind of the way it is. Thanks.
Refer to Tim Dixon.
Well, you said it beautifully. Couple questions, Rob, to clarify to a non-surfer, although I have to say, I have two avid surfers and swimmers in my family, and they're both suggesting we keep things the way they are. And so, apparently, they have plenty of access to surfing. On your chart here, under current, page 16, under current, surfing is allowed, I'm talking about all the areas except for 40th to 44th, just to clarify this point. Surfing is currently allowed, except when it's blackballed. What are the conditions when it's blackballed? Are there safety-related conditions, or if there's swimmers in the water? What are the, what drives the blackball decision?
Yeah, we have a policy that drives our blackball decision based on the number of beach users, the tenants on the beach, and then the tent to use the water, and then individuals in the water, not just waiters, but people that are intending to use the water. So, it's based on a methodology of how many people are in attendance, not the surfers.
It's safe to assume, though, down by Peninsula Point, near the wedge, there are no swimmers there. There are exclusively surfers there.
By the wedge is, well, the, the area between probably 10th Street in Balboa, towards the wedge, is a very different kind of wave break. It's a lot of shore break. It's a lot closer in, because of the way the beach demographics are. It's a steeper beach. And then the entrance channel creates the wedge itself. And so, there's not a lot of board users, with the exception at the wedge, or at the Balboa Pier. And skimboarding has become a more popular water sport recently, in the last number of years. And so, there's a lot of skimboarders through that area as well.
I guess where I'm coming from is that I think there seems, appears to me, to be, after all these many years of this current program, regulation in place, there's plenty, people have been surfing for years, and everyone's been peacefully coexisting in their defined areas, and the swimmers only have between 40th and 44th Street. I guess also, on this same chart, it says between 40th and 44th Street, in the six months of the year, no surfing all day, any hour. So, why is there surfing? I, I guess I just don't understand that, and I guess it's an enforcement issue. But there's not supposed to be any surfing between May 1st and October 31st. Is that correct?
That's correct. And you're right, it's the, the way our staffing is, is handled, we don't, we only have patrol vehicles in the early morning hours. We don't have our towers staffed from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at night. We have our towers staffed through the prime days at the times of the day. And then our patrol vehicles would drive up and down the beach, so they're not stationary. And as they go by, they see risk or enforcement issues, and they will force and comply.
But they're really not there until 10:00 a.m. So, people who are early morning swimmers really don't have access to 40th and 44th Street.
Typically, our tower is staffed anywhere from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., depending on what time of year it is. During the summer, it's 9:00 a.m. During the month of May, if we need it, it'll be staffed at 10:00 or 11:00 a.m. But that's when our patrol vehicles come in, and that's when they do the enforcement as they're driving by and see the surfers in the water.
Yeah, I just know a lot of swimmers who would like to swim in the morning hours, and whether it's good surfing as well. Safety is really what should be our number-one issue.
Correct.
Job number one is safety. So, I guess I'm perplexed why we would open up an area that could, the cylinder, I guess, is the area, too, that would create perhaps greater risk. So, I'm curious about that. But I, I guess where I come down is leave things the way they are. It seemed to be working. You're not going to get all the people to agree all the time, but to dedicate an area for the swimmers between 40th and 44th Street. It's safe. It allows young people to learn how to develop their swimming and surfing skills, and body surfing, and body boogie boarding, and then they could graduate on to other, other parts of the beach. But frankly, I, I don't know what problem we're trying to solve, because it seems like we're serving a lot of different needs reasonably well, and, and that works for me. So, safety will be my guiding principle, and I think the current system pretty much works. So, thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Just to get more clear, I'm fine personally. I don't know how my colleagues feel about recommendation one and two, but I'm opposing three and four.
Councilmember Petros?
Yeah, I may be the stupid one up here, but I just want to make sure that I get one thing clear. The last speaker intimated that we would place a lifeguard tower in a location where the guard couldn't see the waterline. And I want, I, it was funny, I was just up in that tower, watching the sunset, not recently, and I saw the waterline. But I'd like your comment, as the ones who actually staff that tower. Can our guards see the waterline from Tower P?
Yes, our guards can see the waterline from all of our towers. However, there are occasions where there is blockage, depending on how many people are on the beach, what kind of tents are up. We'll try to gain compliance and move people around. But, in that area, our guards have the power actually to walk the bermline, and we encourage that. So, they're down by the water, because danger, it's dangerous area, and things happen quickly in that area. So, we are always encouraging them to be out in the water, and be active down by the waterline, rather than sitting up in their tower.
I was going to suggest that when I, when that does occur, I have seen the guards then down at the waterline.
And you'll see when we have-
We don't, we don't create situations where our guards have a blind spot.
Correct. And we have large crowds there. We always have, anywhere from three to five lifeguards walking the bermline, just for safety.
Right. Mayor Selich, I, there is so much that Councilmember Gardner has done that should really be held in, in high regards. Water quality, the urban forest, just a, a number of things. This is one that I scratched the eight ball over. I agree with Councilmember Duffy and Mayor Pro Tem Dixon. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. This has worked for 20-plus years, and it is one set of groynes where we allow people to swim for the period of time that, that has worked seemingly for decades. So, I, I don't know that I would support any changes right now.
Are you speaking to recommendation number three, or all the recommendations? When you said that?
I'm sorry. Recommendation number three.
Councilmember Pieter, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah. You know what? I support the PBNR recommendations entirely.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with number two. Recommendation number three, I think that we should keep that as a, as it is a swimmers-only area. I think that that's appropriate for the city. On recommendations one and four, I mean, I could leave them alone or change them. The, as a reform surfer, I, I know what it's like out there, and we're never going to make everybody happy. And everyone's always hunting up and down the beach for the right break, so there's never enough water for, for everybody. So, there's always going to be conflict out there of some sort. So, I could leave one and, one and four alone or change them. Agnostic on those two. So, do you get enough opinions from everybody?
No.
Well, they're all different. I figured you were having a little chart, you were adding them up.
I'm trying to develop a recommendation. I, I heard very clearly Mr. Muldoon. I heard Mr. Pieter say to support one and two, three and four. So, I'm struggling a little bit with, more with where the rest of you land on, on one and two. I heard where Ed was, the mayor was. How about Duffy, or, or, Pro Tem Dixon?
All right, I'll be clarified, apologize if I wasn't. Okay. Let me just go through each one. Recommendation one is to just give the lifeguards more authority, opportunity to call the blackball. I support that.
Okay.
Recommendation number two, understanding the designations, delineations for jurisdictional purposes. I support that. Number, recommendation three, I want to keep it as it is between 40th and 44th Streets, so I am opposed to recommendation three. And four, I guess I wrestle with that, just because I don't want to create an unsafe situation. I guess I keep it as it is. So, I guess I would oppose recommendation four.
Okay.
Three and four, I'm opposed to. I support one and two.
Duffy, do you feel like that would be what you would say as well? Okay. So, I think then we have a consensus, enough votes, that if we brought this back, the council would support one and two, but not support three and four. Sound okay? Guys, you have anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Wow, consensus. Okay, thank all the speakers for coming. I appreciate your comments. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments. The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Any public comments on agenda or closed-session items? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Do you have an announcement, Mr. Harp?
Yes, I do. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss agenda items four, A through C, including meeting with City Manager Dave Kiff, Deputy City Manager Terry Cassidy, and John Holtzman to discuss labor negotiations between the city and all represented employees. Meeting with legal counsel to discuss one matter where the city may initiate litigation. And meeting with real property negotiators Lauren Woodding and Simone Jurgis, so the city council can instruct the negotiators as to price in terms of payment in regards to negotiations with Blue Water Grill, Cube Restaurant, and the Machani Group. And that's all related to Newport, one Newport Pier. And I spoke to Councilmember Pieter. He'll be recusing himself from the one matter related to initiation of litigation, because of the possible effect of the matter on his personal finances.
Okay, thank you.